Rules, we have all seven council members present along with our city clerk and our city council attorney, our city clerk staff, and we do have the media and members of the public is also present at this meeting. I want to just open up the meeting and pretty much just start, pretty much let's start with Councilman Jones and just work ourselves around the table and any inputs that we have about our current rules may just go ahead and we'll just discuss and we'll just go around the table from there. Councilman Jones.
The other thing I want to discuss is we just need clarity on how we got to handle the communications with.
Yeah, Michael.
Thank you.
Do we need to be more specific with regards to 262 paragraph A1 with regards to the submission in writing to the city clerk identifying the subject matter to be discussed and described in detail? I think it states it fine as long as we hold to that, but I just want to make sure that we're all in agreement that that's what we're going to do. I think what we've seen in the recent past is somebody signs up for a very general topic and we don't have any idea of what that is which doesn't meet this, so I think we just need to hold the folks that sign up to this standard and we're okay.
Repeat that one more time, Councilman.
So if you read section 262 paragraph A, subparagraph 1, it says interested parties or their authorized representatives wishing to address the council on non-agenda items, items not included on the agenda, must submit in writing to the city clerk a request to address the council identifying the subject matter to be discussed and describing in detail the specific question or issue to be addressed. Single word descriptions are insufficient, and we've seen a number of those that have come on, and I think we've cracked down on that in the last couple of weeks, that they would just have a very general statement, and we really weren't sure what they were going to get up and articulate. And it also says the written communication must relate to city government and must be received by the city clerk. There's been a number of issues that have come before us recently that had nothing to do with city business, and there's nothing we could do after listening for three minutes to take any action even if we wanted to on that. So I think it's written correctly. I just think we need to make sure we're enforcing what's in print.
Madam Clerk, can you want to respond to that?
So, let me start with topics and the subject matter. When we get a call from a citizen to address the council, we're asked what do they want to address the council regarding? And yeah, oftentimes we are given, you know, just one word, redistricting or annexation, and everyone has been instructed at this point to, well, prior to this point, but to ask for additional information, what is it about annexation that you want to discuss? So we try to get as more, as much information as we possibly can with regard to what they're going to talk to you all about with regard to that one word, subject matter, and sometimes it's not always attainable from some people. They don't have congruent thought patterns to readily explain in detail what they want to discuss. Overall, we can get it, but a lot of, just on a few occasions, we cannot get detailed information. We understand that everyone doesn't have questions, but we try to get what information they want to present to you all with regard to the subject that they're trying to convey. The other thing is with this, my question is to the council, how do you want us to handle those individuals that are coming to address you all regarding not necessarily issues that are city government related, but those things where they want to present their new program that they're starting in the city?
Yeah, Councilman Dayes.
Sort of jumping in front of Councilman Carroll, I know.
Y'all already know where I stand on this.
You know, I agree with Councilman Jones, the, you know, if you look at this, we, if I'm correct, we adopted this rule less than a year ago, April 19th, 2022. We changed these rules to address just this issue. And, you know, the first thing I'd say is that it says that the request must be submitted in writing. It doesn't say you can call on the phone. It says it has to be submitted in writing. So the first step, I think, would be to adhere to that rule, which requires that they be submitted in writing. And then the second thing is that when it is submitted in writing, single word descriptions or topics are insufficient. The request must contain enough information so that the council will have enough information to adequately respond if desired. You know, we're never going to get to the point where, where it's absolutely clear in every situation exactly how the clerk's staff should respond, because every kind of situation is different. I think, I think we're all agreed, or a lot of us are agreed, that, that we're just getting these very general statements and that, and that we need to have more specificity. In that case, I think we're going to have to, it requires some discretion on the part of the person who was receiving the request. And I think what we're going to all have to agree to, if we intend to enforce our own rules in this respect, is that we're going to have to support the decisions that the clerk's staff makes when they receive these, with the understanding that we would like more specificity.
Lisa, is the forms on the city website?
Yes.
So basically, like, you know, Councilman Joe, Dave just stated that, you know, it states that it has to be in writing. So council is, I mean, I guess we, when this was adopted, it was pretty much just stating that they have to at least go on the website, print out the forms, and either fax it or email it back to us. So today, four, so that mean y'all not going to take no more older phones or?
That's what the rules state.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's my question to you, that y'all not going to accept no more older phones, correct?
If we're going to adhere to what the rules say, then we will not, we will no longer accept phone calls. They'll have to submit it.
We also have forms available that fill out in the lobby area.
You know, something that might be even easier, the form online needs to be writable, so they don't have to download it. That way they can fill it out online and send it back to us without all that stuff. And the other thing is, is cutting off the phone application. Not everybody is computer literate, especially our older generation, you know, so we need to make some concessions to the phone.
Well, I'll just comment on that.
Nobody's limited to the phone, I mean, to the internet. I mean, the forms are available, widely available, somebody can use the mail, as we get letters all the time, somebody can, you know, especially folks that come down to the meetings routinely, the forms are here for someone to fill out and turn in that way. And, and before we get too far beyond just section 2-62A1, there's, there's also this very important number two, which it's not that we're trying to, to squash people coming down and speaking at the meeting, that's certainly not my goal, but we're trying to keep our business narrowly focused on the items before us. And anyone, anyone can discuss or talk about any item on the agenda that's before us. So I think the idea is we're considering big projects, small projects of all types every week, and we want to try to keep our business, you know, in that order or focused to what we're doing, but still being amicable and open to people sharing things that are not before us, such as we see week after week.
Again, this is going back to written communication. I'm talking about Betty Know Nothing, who lives out on Tyndale Street in Africa Town, who has no computer but only a telephone, who's 81 years old, who can't get here. That, that's what I'm talking about. Now, I mean, we're talking about different generations here, and those people still exist, so there needs to be concessions made again for the telephone.
President, I would submit there is. When you look at the verbiage, it says interested parties or their authorized representatives. That could be somebody with a computer that they authorized to sign up on their behalf that can be handled that way.
Again, some people have private issues where they only want to talk to us and not give it to someone else to bring to us. Don't take away the right of the person to talk directly to the entity that they're trying to get to by forcing them to go somewhere else to get to us. That, again, that's kind of not acceptable. We have to make a concession to the phone.
Mr. President?
Hold on. Line from the Anacor.
What if we tell the forms to the meeting and people pick them up and take them back to those that don't have internet access?
I'm talking about the individual who only comes down here once in a blue moon that has something serious. I'm not talking about somebody that's always here. I'm talking about that individual that really needs us, that needs to get to us, that doesn't have the means that everybody else does, and yeah, I could, you know, I can call them out because I've had to do it, and I've had to fill out some of the forms myself because they couldn't get here. So I'm talking from experience now, not from speculation.
It was Gina at Anacor.
Oh, okay. I tend to agree with William on this. I don't know how many people that, you know, would include, probably not that many.
That's right.
The folks who don't have access to internet or not coming down to the meetings anyway to pick up a form, but that would be something that Lisa, I think you would have to use your discretion on, because you're not going to start taking phone calls from lots and lots of people who suddenly don't have access to an internet, because maybe it's easier to call. But if it is someone who says, look, I'm this age, I don't have access to the internet, I can't come down to pick up a form, but I would like to speak, then that may be an opportunity for you in particular to speak with them and say, I will help you fill out the form. They still going to have to give you the details and the information that we would require, but it would be an opportunity that you would need to get involved in and try to help people who are just not able to do it.
If they're able to come down here.
But it's only, you know, once a week, every so often, and that's, that's the ability to get down here. If they don't have access to a computer and they're not coming to meetings every week, they may not be able to, except for maybe the one time they want to come speak. So I just think we've got to be cognizant of that as well.
Problem is, the problem is that once, and I understand what you're saying, the problem is we, there are a certain number of people who take advantage.
Well, and that's where Lisa and her staff are going to have to, yeah, I understand. That's why I was saying that it should be a small number, and that Lisa and her staff would have to help police that. I mean, otherwise, yeah, it's all internet-based or mail or, you know, come down here and pick them up to meetings, the only other option.
That's not what the ordinance says right now.
I know, I see what it says.
You finished, Mr. Gregory? Mr. Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Honestly, to, until every community have access to all the resources that we believe that everyone have access to, you can't but think that everybody have that type of access. I'm telling you, at this point, I know senior citizens that don't have people to drop them off to get this information, and I understand that you say, well, maybe that particular day they can get down there, but they have to beg, they have to ask people, can you come and pick me up for this one Tuesday? That's a challenge sometimes just to get down here, so that could be a major challenge for the get that type of assistance again to get down here to get that type of help. Until we able to provide those type of services for every resident, I believe we have to create the resources and help for our senior citizens, because they need it, because I'm telling you, they don't have the access. Right now, we're still dropping hot meals to people who don't have access to get food. So how they going to have access to print a document if they need food? So I believe that if we can help that small group, then we need to do all that. But I agree that we need to start trying to figure that out. This is a great opportunity to start trying to put things in place, because it just shows the, the need for certain areas that don't have this access. And so I believe for that small group, we need to, to make some, you know, resources for them to make sure that they still can get their voices heard here at the city council.
Just as a follow-up, you know, it depends on what the topic is. If it's something that is immediate, then, then yeah, you know, I can maybe understand calling in and having Lisa help them, but if it's something that's a couple of weeks away, they could come today, they could come next week and it wouldn't matter, then we should be able just to mail it to them and have them mail it back or something along those lines. I think it would depend on the situation, because so many of these are kind of evergreen things, they just maybe want to come talk to us about something that is not necessarily coming up today or tomorrow or even next week, that they can get something in the mail, fill it out, and send it back.
And I, I believe too, we can build relationships with our community groups, like at the Mobile Library, Mobile Community Action, forms there, make sure that we, but we got to build those relationships and have those things in place before we start implementing these guidelines and say that, okay, this is what we're going to start doing. But like you said, to your point, Councilwoman Gregory, that, you know, these are some questions that you can ask, but I believe we need to make sure that everybody have an opportunity to have their voice heard.
Yeah, I mean, and I agree with my colleagues, Carol and Penn and Gregory, that the city clerk should just pretty much just use your best judgment, because again, you know, I think about some, you know, elderly people that's in my district, you know, they have passion, but they just don't know how to do a PDF and et cetera. But if they keep on just giving you one word and just say, you know, I want to talk about, you know, the budget, you know, and that's it, then we just, you have to automatically, you know, just tell them, look, just go ahead and fill out one of these forms and submit it, and if the forms still say budget, you know, then we just, you know, put it to the side. Mr. Reynolds?
But that's not what the law says. The law says it must be in writing, and it's an unfair burden to put the clerk at, to use her discretion. I mean, if we want the law to say something different, then we need to make an amendment to this. And, you know, I welcome somebody offering amendment, I'm not, again, not, the goal isn't to squash somebody from coming down here, but there, this is one way that people have the ability to interact with their representative or their government. Every one of us have a cell phone, every one of us have a mailing address, every one of us have emails. There is opportunity for people to interact with us routinely, but to go to the higher standard to get the forum of the public, you know, and be able to use the floor of the city council to project their message, they should have to meet a little bit higher burden in order to come down and, and speak and on the subject matter that they're interested in. And if there is something that is on the agenda, there is no signup requirement, no written documentation that has to be sitting, submitted, all they have to do is show up down here, write their name, what agenda item they're going to speak on, and then they can speak on it. There's, there's no, nobody is trying to squash people speaking to their representative, and, you know, it's, somebody calls me, then it's my job to elevate their voice for issues that are pertinent to District Four. And so we all have that ability. So I think the rule is sufficient, I think it should be adhered to in all scenarios, and we all know the standard. That's my opinion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Carroll and Mr. Penn?
Lisa, going back to Glenda, did you, did you guys take written messages from the phone for presentations to the council on non-agenda items?
The majority, because I handled it when Glenda was the city clerk, the majority were in writing. They came down here in writing, or they were here, you know, on Tuesday, and they submitted it, you know, for the following week then. There weren't a lot of call-ins at that time.
Okay, so they were, they all did it week prior for the next week? So, and in our world today, are people taking advantage of the phone and having you guys do the dictation?
Yes.
So it would be?
Ask them if they have access to internet, to do it that way, or fax or anything?
I have not.
Prior to you all taking it?
Have not.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, even I'm kind of guilty of that too, so.
No kidding.
Well, y'all know I'm, I'm the world's best at trying to get a point across. I, if, if, from my first term, if that's the way you guys handle it then, then I don't have way, I don't have a problem with going back to a presentation to council on non-agenda items, and it must have a written form, but there needs to be some discretion for those that can't get to the form, either via by phone or however. So, you know, I, I just think that for those few that just can't do it, we need some type of discretion, and that'll be your choice, I think. Council should give you that discretion to make that choice.
Mr. Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, if everything Councilman Reynolds said was true, I would definitely agree with him, but everybody doesn't have an email, everybody doesn't have a cell phone. And so if that was true, I would definitely agree with you, but right now, that's not the case. So if that's not the case, I believe we should have some type of discretionary with our clerk that it is written for people who don't have access to it. So I, I believe, you know, when a person called, if you do not have access, then it should be a discretionary saying, okay, you do not have access, then we write the information down. For people who have access, that's a whole different type of situation, and that should be asked, I believe. Do you have access? Because you should not hold no one accountable for something they don't have. They don't have access to it, why should we not allow them to be able to speak if they don't have? And we know right now that it's still people who do not have it.
Agreed. A prime example of me, 2015, Gina, if y'all remember, I came to the council two days after an incident happened to talk to the council. Even being a previous council member, y'all shut me down and said, put it in writing, come back the next week. So, I mean, I can agree to those of us that can do it, but again, to those that, that can't, I agree with you now, but the, the bigger issue is, is that, I, I think we got enough support for that issue, but we got to take on the issue of, there's some that abuse this, so we got to.
Before we get to that, can I go back?
Yes, ma'am.
If, we'll have to change the rules if we, you know, do some of this, but if we do to try to help the folks who do not have internet or cell phone or whatever, if they call in and want to speak to something that is not an agenda item, and they tell you they don't have access to internet or fax or something, if it is an item or an issue that can wait until next week or two weeks from then, can I mail you the form? You know, because a lot of the people who do come don't necessarily have to speak that coming, you know, Tuesday, it could wait a couple of weeks, and then that way you could send them the form, they could fill it out, mail it back, and then you give them the date that they can come speak. So that could be a question, and hopefully pare down.
And, and I would add on to that, to accommodate, you, we can accommodate, still accommodate with it still being in writing, we can accommodate the law and we can accommodate the citizen with this, so that if someone calls and says, hey, I want to speak on this, that, or the other, and it's a non-agenda item, you can say, well, you have to fill out a form, do you have an email, I can email it to you? No. Do you have any, or what's your address? And, and the clerk's office can mail the form along with a citation of the rules of the council or a form letter of sorts that we could come up with that explains step by step how those folks can get on the presentations on the agenda. Let's say this citizen you're talking about that has no access to anything other than being able to call down to the clerk's office, right? They call the clerk's office and they say, hey, look, I want to speak on whatever the topic is, that's a non-agenda item, something that's not on the agenda. The clerk, instead of saying, well, tell me what you want to talk about, I'll fill the form out for you, which is against the law, the ordinance, instead of that happening, the clerk says, well, look, they start figuring out a way to get that form to them at that point and say, we can, we can mail you a form, we can email you a form, we can, you know, have the, we can reach out to the Mobile Public Library and have them print them a copy, what, whatever means that is possible, but when they send that, they also send a form letter to that constituent that not only outlines the rules of the council that is dealing with this issue, which is section, the one we've been discussing, but then also a step-by-step process or, you know, something that helps guide them to the ultimate goal of them being able to walk up to the microphone and speak on a non-agenda item.
So we're still mailing it to them?
No, any, any means poss, by any means reasonably possible from the clerk's office to, to get them to fill out the form or to put it in writing in accordance with the ordinance. Those accommodations are already there, both the constituent and the law can be accommodated with this without changing the law, in my opinion.
We need to, I really, I really would like us to, as much as possible, just continue leaving messages, because I get messages on my voicemail on my phone, my direct line, and if I'm not in the office that day, if I'm on vacation, I'm not checking my voicemail. I'm, you know, I'm not at work, I'm on vacation, so I'm not checking voicemail. So, you know, people have gotten left off, you know, because I was out of the office or, you know, I was out sick or I was on vacation. So we really need to try as, you know, as much as possible not to, not to have them, you know, leave messages on the phone. I, and I, I'd like to say this too, so with regard to, there are very few that come in from the districts where the person is calling in and they have no means, very few. So those, I don't have a problem, you know, we don't have a problem handling that in the manner in which we've handled it in the past. Usually those that come in that way, they are calling, they're basically using the council meeting as a 3-1-1. And so we try to diffuse that before, you know, instead of just signing them up, some of them are adamant about coming to face you all, but we trying to fuse that and get that sent for resolution before it comes to them coming, having to come down here to address you all. So that's handled internally. I just found out just recently, this past week, that the administration, we, if, if I, when I get the agenda to prove it, if there is someone who has signed up that's questionable, I call them back or Lana will call them back to ask for more information or more detail or get, to make it clear what they want to address you all. So I just found out that the administration has people calling also. So now you have our eight citizens saying, why am I getting two or three phone calls to ask why, you know, what, what is it that I want to address?
There are people calling the administration, asking to speak to the city council?
I know, the administration has staff calling the individuals that have signed up to address the council to ask for clarification on what they want to address the council about, so there's, there's a, you know, a head, but.
But Al Sturridge used to do that, remember?
Right, but Al talked to me.
Oh, he talked to you, okay.
Al talked to me first, right, Al talked to me first, and he got those people that were trying to come.
Had a real question about it.
Right, if it's something that they're handling, then I gave those to him. So that's something that we need to address, because we, you know, we don't need people calling and not knowing that we've already gotten that information.
So, they'll call the council. How they get into the min-, how the administration?
Because the agenda comes out.
The agenda comes out.
So, then they see it on the agenda first, and then they're-
And then they ca-, they contact the person, and we've already contacted them, so-
What I do is I call Lana every Wednesday, who's signed up to speak to certain items. And if it's something that I think maybe somebody's misled, or misunderstood, or there's information that they need to have that they didn't have, I pick up the phone and call them. So, sometimes I'll have them say, well, so-and-so's already called me, or, uh, somebody from the, the mayor's office called me ahead of you calling me. You know, I'm so glad you called me too, but, you know, there's a, there's an ongoing conversation with a lot of these people that sign up to speak to the Council on Non-Agenda Items.
It would be good to coordinate all of that, so that they don't have two or three people calling and confusing, yeah.
Well, and to that point, I had one of my constituents call me and ask, why am I having the, you know, the administration call me because I signed up to speak at the city council? And, and they were inquiring, what are you going to speak about? What do you, what are you signed up for?
If they were, I'm sorry, Scott.
If, if there's an issue, then I think the administration should reach out to either the clerk or to- the councilman whose district it is in, and, and let's, because they're getting on this to talk to us. This is a city council meeting, and-
Sometimes they're, they're doing it to bring an issue-
And, and that's okay, but that, that should be a discussion between us and the administration to figure that out and what that looks like, not the administration reaching out to them and leaving us out of the loop, and we don't know what that discussion and conversation looks like.
If it's, if it's truly an administrative issue, that it's not something that the council has really any control over, I think that was why Al had done what he did, and probably why they're doing it now, although I didn't realize they were doing it. But it should be something that the administration could get involved with if it, in fact, is something that they would be dealing with anyway. But, at the same time, I think that Lisa and her folks, or the district person, if they're from the specific district, should be looped in, and Lisa probably should be the one coordinating with whoever on the administration is doing them.
Yeah, but this goes back to what I said when we first went through this. The agenda belongs to the council and not the administration. So, any outreach of any item or any in particular person on the agenda should come from the clerk's office and not the administration, whether they're in an attempt to control the narrative, or control the flow of information, or to influence how the votes are gonna go. Uh, this goes back to what I told you guys when I first got back here. This is the council's agenda, and there should be a council person that sponsors every item on here. Now, who gave away that, who gave away that authority? I don't know. But that authority should be in the council's hand.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, Mr. Dase.
You know, a lot of times, people are coming down to ask us to do things we do not have the power to do. It only the administration, only the mayor has the power to do. And if the admin-, if, if the, if the administration is reaching out to people like that to answer their questions before they come down here, that saves that person time, it saves us time, it saves everybody time. I've got no objection to that.
I'm not, I'm, yeah, I'm not gonna argue it, but I don't like it when the administration is out there trying to will one narrative, and we're trying to legislate another. You know, that, that causes confusion in the community. It, 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 it goes back to that, the, that one word I keep telling you guys about between city government and the people, distrust. It creates it.
What, what evidence do you have that the administration's engaged in that?
I, 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 I just told you, there have been times when I've called my own people back, and they've said, hey, the administration called me on this the day before. So, that's proof, that's proof enough right there.
All it is, is proof that they called you, not that they have any false narrative.
Joel, I don't know what happens out there. I'm just saying it happens. And I, I, I'm just saying that if it's our agenda, we need to be controlling it. It's just that simple. The other, uh, look, that's another can of worms outside of the Rules Committee right now. So, let's just stick to the task at hand. I don't know if we're, if you're satisfied with where we are, but we still need to ta-take on this task about, um, those that, um, somewhat, uh, take advantage or abuse the ability to speak to the council, you know, on non-agenda items.
So, I, I, I'm just referencing, um, in, with regard to the, um, citizens that, uh, call, that they really should be calling 3-1-1, but they want to come down here, or they have not been satisfied with 3-1-1, then I would like that ability to, um, try and help that individual out by giving, um, that to, um, you know, Keisha and her department to handle it, to, to further handle that, as opposed to that individual having to come down here to the council meeting to, um, to address you all and get it handled, so-
I, I'm fine skipping. I'm fine with what, uh, Mr. Reynolds has suggested about if, if someone calls, and you ask them, and they say, I don't have, I don't have a computer, I don't have any internet, I don't have a car, I don't have, I just can't do it, then, then, which ought to be a very small number of people, then arrange some way to get them a, a form that they can, I, you know, that they can fill out and send back to us.
I, I want to get back to this 3-1-1 type call, and if they call in with something like that, and, and you, I got no issues whatsoever with going to the administration and trying to get that resolved with Keisha, whatever. But we do need to know that that call was made, because there may be two or three other constituents that I've talked to about that. And now that, that just adds to the number of folks that I know have an issue with this, and it, it just ups the level of, of work that I need to put into a specific issue. But if I don't know those calls are being made, and the administration's doing things, then I don't know really where the problems exist in, in my district. So, it's just a, a situational awareness thing for me to know that's going on, and that, you know, public works, whoever's having conversations with a constituent on a problem, so I can track what that problem is and know that they're, they're in touch with the administration.
I just asked Keisha to come down, and, uh, Keisha, we have been, uh, discussing about, um, citizens called here and, uh, to the council to sign up on the agenda, and the administration might go ahead and call the citizen to see what's going on, then the council member turn back around and see the same, you know, see the same thing that the citizen had signed up, and then the council member turn back around and call that same citizen. We were trying to see, we can just, if you all, the administration, uh, go ahead and contact the citizen, if you all can just loop us in and let us know that you all had contacted the citizen, before the citizen won't be bothered by two or three, you know, phone calls and everything.
There needs to be a coordination with us.
Yeah, coordinate with the citizen, the clerk office, and also the council member.
Well, the, this was specific to, uh, uh, presentations to the Council on Non-Agenda Items, right? The speakers that show. We're not talking about 3-1-1 calls, because that log, I think, uh, Ms. Tate sends us every other day or so, and then at the end of the month, um, Leslie sends us a register of the calls made too, but we're talking about agenda people, when they're showing the agenda and the administration's calling them, and, yeah, but that, it's our responsibility. I mean, I call, well, I call my own when I have to, but I get that message. Well, the administration just called me, they said this, you know, and I'm like, whoa, you know? It, but it's like, why is the administration calling an issue what we're trying to handle in our district, or somebody's coming to talk directly to us, and it's our agenda? You know, you guys are, you know, it's, 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 sometimes it creates a, 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 a false positive, I should say, or a feeling of mistrust when they're two different people answering or trying to respond to an issue where the, the, the citizen may have one point of view, and someone, the administration and the council may have different opinions.
Mr. President?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. What you about to say, Keisha?
Oh, I know, on some items, council has asked me to call to see what that person was coming to do, so that's how we got involved with calling the constituents. But we can actually loop in and see, like, call you guys first, see if you've called before we call. Just make sure we're all on the same page.
Ms. Gregory, then Mr. Reynolds, and then Lisa.
No, I think that's fine. You know, if, if somebody from the district, or anybody's district, um, signs in to speak about a non-agenda item, and it's more of an administrative issue, but if you want, if you would, as you've been doing, but coordinate with the council person, hey, I see so-and-so has signed up to speak about this issue, would you like me to go ahead and contact them to see if we can resolve the issue prior to Tuesday? If you loop in the council person, I think that's probably what would work.
Uh, just quick-
Yeah, I mean, and just, so that, I think that the main goal is to resolve the issue, not necessarily to come down and speak, but to resolve the issue.
Keisha, if you start speaking again, why, Mr. Reynolds, then Mr. Carroll?
The mayor is an elected official, and the mayor and his office can call whoever they want to call. It's not us, our job to tell the mayor and his administration, don't call this person, don't call that person. I happen to like the fact that they're trying to stay in front of issues and try to resolve them before they, you know, re-reach a level that's out of control. I appreciate that. We- If somebody calls the clerk's office, the clerk's office currently does a fantastic job of reporting an issue that is, that comes in. They send me a nice note that says the subject matter of what's going on. They would like a call back, or they don't want to call back, or whatever it is. And then I have the ability to pick up the phone and call the constituent about whatever the issue is. So, there's no reason to try to interject in what the mayor and their office are doing. I mean, they're doing a pretty good job of it, and believe it or not, uh, hearing from, uh, your council person and the mayor is, is sometimes very helpful, you know? It's not like our views are always aligned. I mean, we have the ability to have a different view, time, and, you know, here or there, and that's kind of what we're supposed to be doing. So, I think this is a discussion that is really irrelevant. I mean, we, we're, we're, we're doing a, a fan- fantastic job, the rules are sufficient. We just need to empower the clerk with, with following the rules and trying to accommodate those who, uh, have struggled to follow the rules. And, and then it's a clear playing field all the way forward.
Before you, Mr. Carroll.
Um, my reason for bringing this up is just so that we make it clear that it's a coordinated effort that, um, we're not having citizens think that, um, we're not aware, you know, what the left and right hand are doing. So, it's a coordinated effort between Keisha's office and my office that, uh, we sit down and we know that you're going to, uh, call these people so that I'm not calling them, or Lana is not calling them, and then Keisha's office calls them so that, you know, you upset the citizen, that's all. So, as long as, uh, Keisha and, um, me or my staff, uh, coordinate who is going to call this person back, we're good.
If you don't have a comment, I do.
No, Lisa's the boss right there. Um, if that's what she wants, that's what she gets, because she has to handle it. I'm done. I mean, that's the law.
But I mean, I'm, uh, that's not to, no, it's not to say, it's not to say that, um, you, my council won't know-
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, okay.
It, 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 basically, it's going the way it's going right now, except for, uh, when one calls, the other calls, we just need to know what's going on.
Right.
I, I don't have a problem with that, if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I think it's good that we get looped in.
Yeah, I, we, not, not good, we need to be looped in.
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Dase.
Yeah, it, it is absolutely relevant, because when I have a constituent call me who signed up to speak on the city council agenda, and the mayor's office calls solely for the purpose of asking additional questions, and the mayor's office doesn't loop back in with the city council office to know they've made that call, then I get a call back saying, why is the mayor's office calling me? Because I didn't call the mayor's office. I didn't ask for anything. Um, then we got a problem. And if, if the mayor's office calls back to, to Lisa, and we know they're linked in, and, and I know if it's my constituent, that the mayor's office has reached out, I'm probably gonna call that person back and make sure that they're happy and understand what the results were. So, I'm tracking, and I'm not out of line and out of sync with whatever office called them from the mayor's administration, because we've got to be in unison on whatever action it is that, that is being worked for that constituent. So, that, that's the only reason why I say it's imperative, and it is relevant, that we stay united, which I think is what Lisa is, is referring to.
Hey, Lisa, on a lot of these-
Hold on, Ms. Gregory.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Dase, then Ms. Gregory.
Thank you, Ms. President. I have not run into this problem. I, I have not run into this problem that has surfaced about too many people calling the constituent. If I were a constituent, I'd be delighted that, that I had the attention of the mayor and my city council person.
And the city clerk.
And the city clerk. So, Keisha, you, insofar as District Five is concerned, keep it up. I, I think we're kind of getting a little bit of field from what we were here for, and I think we've reached a consensus on this issue of submission in writing. And so, but I, I'm not sure we reached a consensus on the specificity issue. And, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know how we can, I mean, I, I just think that, that, uh, that y'all are gonna have to be a little more tighter. And, and then we're gonna have to support them being tighter, because we're gonna have a lot of people, we're gonna have, I don't know. We're gonna have people that, that say a one-word answer is sufficient, that ought to be sufficient for you. Well, it's not sufficient for us. We want more than a one-word statement of what the, what, what the issue is.
On, on any of these, are we asking people, do you want to make a statement, or are you going to ask?
Yes.
Let me give an example. Is this, and I think this is relevant. We, we've had a number of folks come down, and all that says on our agenda was abuse of power. If you're gonna come down and say that the city council has, has acted in a way that it has abused a citizen in some way, shape, form, or fashion, that's a serious allegation. And if you can't lay out a specific example of what that abuse is, then I don't think they should be able to get in front of a microphone in front of the city council. You've got to be able to, to give, if you, and I'm just using that as an example. If you say there's been abuse of power, you need to say specifically what that abuse is and why you feel that way. And you don't have to use names or anything else, but then we have some general idea. And what I've heard, and, and this has been on the agenda for about three weeks in a row, in some, you know, it wasn't this week, but previously. And then when they get up in front and they speak for three minutes, I haven't heard anything that, that was an abuse of power. And, and so that person spoke for three minutes without giving any type of actionable item that was presented to the city council that we can do anything with. And I think that's what, what I'm trying to get at, is if you're gonna take the time of, of the business meeting to present something, it's gotta be specific enough for us to action. There's gotta be an item that we can action.
So, um, yeah, uh, with that exam-, with, with that example, um, it has been difficult, you know, as I said to you before, to get, um, congruent sentences and statements to describe that. So, I think that this goes back to must submit in writing. So, individuals such as that would have to write it, they'll have to write it out. And it, it won't be up to me to try to, um, glean from them what exactly they're, um, trying to talk about.
And maybe, you know, in this, if we're gonna adopt any changes, maybe in them there, if you have a question, you submit it to the president, who has the final say with regards to what it was for, and I got no issues with that either.
Legal question. How does that affect the ADA?
Do you mean the discussion in general? How does it affect the ADA? Reasonable accommodations need to be made to people that have disabilities. So, from a legal, I, again, from a legal standpoint, my advice to the council and the clerk's office would be, for example, on the phone application thing, the default rule under the law as it's written ought to be refer them to writing. If they will, for lack of a better term, certify on the phone that they have a legitimate disability or communications issue or hardship, then I think they should be accommodated to be safe under the ADA and applicable law. I would also say then that the clerk's office should endorse upon whatever written document is generated off the phone call taken by phone because blank. In other words, they, they, they need to state what accommodation they need and why. In other words, they, they, they need to state what accommodation they need and why. I think that would help to winnow out, uh, people who are abusing it because if we've got a written record of what's happened, we can be both consistent about what we're doing and then we'll be able to winnow out abusers because they, well, wait a second, you, you've said two weeks ago this, but now you're down here, you see, if you see what I'm saying there. So again, absolutely, I think under the ADA and all applicable law, we should accommodate people reasonably, but I think we also need to generate a record and make sure we're being consistent about it.
And then hold on to that, hold on to those that we have a written record of, of when we made, when we made exceptions and why.
Yes.
And that also applies to the LD too, right?
To the what? Correct, correct.
Also the learning disability.
Yes.
So.
I just, I just, just as a, as a legal policy matter, if we're making exceptions, we need to make sure we document what exception has been made to the written policy, to the policy that must be submitted right because the law says it must be in writing. I, we can make accommodations, but we should document what they are and make sure we are applying them consistently in order to comply and to make sure nobody's abusing our process.
The action of repetitive action, how do we address that?
The simple answer is very carefully, um, I'd like, I, I, there's some recent law that I would prefer to discuss at another time with the council because there's, there are legal ramifications to penalization, I guess, for lack of a better term. Not right, not at this time, no. I, I just, I'd, I'd like to defer that to a later time if we could.
So let, let.
Change the rules to reflect what Michael was saying about the exceptions.
So let me ask this question though, with regards to that.
Yes, and how do we word it? That's, that was my next question. I would ask him to word it and give it to everybody else.
Yeah. Well, and, and there's the question is where you draw the line with regards to the requirement that we lay on everybody else with regards to specificity? And, and there's the gray area, right? So how, how do you lay that out to make sure? So we're still saying that this is still a mandate for ADA, that they still have to meet the onus of what's in, that, that's, that's not alleviated by virtue of them having.
It, it's, it's, the, the, the law, the city ordinance as written still requires that anything be a matter of the written communication, i.e. what they submit for the agenda proposal, must relate to city government. I think the way to properly prompt that or prime the pump, as it were, especially on the phone or where there's a one word or something like that is to say, if, let's take the abuse of power, uh, example again, abuse of power. How has the city government abused power or what abuse of power relating to the Mobile City Government are, do you wish to address? I just, I just, I, we just, just go straight from the statute, bring it back to how does this relate to the Mobile City Government?
Wow.
Okay. I'm clear.
Anything else, Ms. Carroll?
It's just a lot to think about and addressing it to, to make sure that the fairness and to everybody is granted with the ability to come speak. But to be honest, I mean, to abuse the opportunity over and over and over and over and over again and not speak to it in general, I think that the written statement would kind of wash some of that out because you'd have to speak directly about the written statement. But the ability to, to write the written statement is the question there, but when you write that amendment, will you get a chance to take a look at it and make sure that it's correct?
To that point though, I want to remind us, it says, are there authorized representative? So if they are one that falls in that ADA spectrum, they have the ability to get somebody that, that can articulate clearly their thought and idea and, and that be used.
Yeah, that's not the case, but if you're, um, um, what's the phrase that they use? Functional, yes. Yeah, when you're high functional, then that, that would go outside the envelope. So we need to be.
The requirement's still there.
Yeah, the requirement's still there, but we need to be really careful in how we approach it and elevate it so that everybody needs to have that, which is the city council.
Mr. Day, Mr. Gregory.
Okay, can we go back to, um, must relate to city government? Um, and this, uh, how does it apply to those, uh, individuals or groups that want to come and tell you all about their new program?
Program?
Or business, or their new business?
I don't have a problem with that, but that's one of those that is kind of an evergreen thing that they probably don't need at one o'clock to be desperate to speak to us on Tuesday unless they're getting ready to open or something. But it, it could be something that it's easy enough for them to fill out the application, I mean, the, the form and submit it in time to be able to come and speak. If they've got a new business or a new program that they're bringing to the city, I don't have a problem with people coming and sharing the information.
But it still must relate to city government and the burden is on the person.
Well, if it's in the city of Mobile and it's offering.
Right, I, I get it. I'm not saying it doesn't relate. I'm saying the burden of proof in this regard is on that group to check the boxes of the ordinance, which is must be in writing. Did I write it down? Yes. Does it relate to city government? Okay, well, how? How did they explain in writing that it related to city government, whatever it was?
When I read the rules, you know, I state every week must contain the city of Mobile business.
Yep.
You know, and I believe that citizens, you mean, you come down here and talk about, you know, the Zaya Trail Run. I mean, it should be, I mean, it's inside the city limits. Now, I ain't studying nothing that's going on in Daphne or Beryl, but.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that they shouldn't have the opportunity. I'm saying they absolutely should have the opportunity to do it. But it's their burden to put it in writing and explain precisely as it says how it pertains to city business. And if it doesn't check those boxes, you know, then they don't get the opportunity.
Should we make an area on the form that says, how does this pertain to city of Mobile business?
Yeah.
For new business, hopefully.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, that, that.
And so that to be in like the abuse of power, your next question has to be, how does this relate to city business?
So I'm going to open a donut shop on the corner. I want to come down here and say, hey, I'm a new business in town. I'd like to introduce myself.
Well, the city's going to make sales tax revenue off that business.
That's every business, that's my point.
And we're having a ribbon cutting, come on down.
Why we put to the point? I mean, let them come talk.
It's not, it's not, it's not what the ordinance says right now.
I, 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 I'm just saying, we're looking for a way to keep people talking to the city.
That's not true. That's not true.
So let them come talk.
Well, then why don't we just throw the, why don't we just throw this in the garbage can if that's your position?
You do it if you want to. I say let them come talk.
Well, I think everybody else here agrees that.
But, but I think this meeting was called to, in order to address a, a very narrow group that, um, maybe have operated a, a bit beyond our scope, um, in the ordinance. And in order to, uh, fix that problem, then strict adherence to the ordinance is required. Uh, and, and strict adherence to the ordinance demands that it must be specific and it must relate to city business. So in, in an effort to not exclude another big group of people, then we should accommodate them on the form potentially, says, you know, check boxes. Have you checked all these boxes? And the clerk is not left with a decision, oh man, what am I going to do with this one? She can answer with the affirmative that every box was checked and she can report that to us and there's a record of it. And, you know, there could even be a section on, you know, are you disabled? You know, or, or what you're, what's going on where we can have a record of that as well. I mean, there, there's a way to accommodate all the citizens, which I think the law does, and there's a way to accommodate the expediency of the business where you're hired by the masses to conduct. I think we've got it worked out.
And there is.
Replace the word government with the word business if you want to.
If you look at section two to sixty-three, it's something that we have the ability to do that we haven't done. Look at specifically paragraph C, it says, any person making personal impertinent, impertinent or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while the council is in session shall be forthwith by the presiding officer barred from further audience before the council unless permission and continues granted by the affirmative vote of five members. This impertinent section is exactly what we're talking to.
You know, I asked about that because we've had to dismiss some people from council for four, four lengths at times. I think that, I don't remember which legal attorney it was, but somebody said that we couldn't bar them from, from, from addressing us or, or, no, hold on, just give me two seconds. We couldn't bar them from coming into the atrium, but we could prevent them from speaking.
Right, yeah.
So are we saying that this says that we can prevent them from speaking?
That's what this is.
That's.
Unless the council approves to let them continue to speak.
The word is indefinitely.
Don't say indefinitely.
Can they be barred from speaking to the council indefinitely until that bar was removed?
Indefinitely is somewhat problematic with this case law because I guess you can't permanently ban anybody from exercising speech rights. We would have to narrowly pale or something like that to make sure that you were not going beyond.
Uh, I, I don't, I don't ever believe in barring somebody indefinitely. The question was just asked because of the way it was presented.
I wouldn't, if I barred people permanently indefinitely, I would do it for specific reasons.
So consequence versus action.
I mean, you could further state in here.
You could go one step further to your point, William. And state that if this behavior continued over the course of two to three weeks, then the person could be barred from speaking for X months. But that's an, a, a consequence of a behavior, not one time. I don't think one time is, is the right answer. But if they came down and, and, you know, this was an event that happened two to three times, then we've got a precedent that's been established by that individual that we can take action.
Yeah, we, you know, I've been here 10 years. I don't think we have abused that power.
It's only been a few times that there's been. Yeah, yeah, and it's never been forever. It's always just been limited time, but this does seem to say shall be forthwith.
That's right.
Barred. There, there's no time certain on that. Yeah.
Well, it's, it's at the, it's at the president's discretion. So, and the president, I, I can't remember Clinton, Reggie, none of them ever barring anybody indefinitely.
No.
And we've done just temporarily.
A period of time, yeah. Period of time. But I mean, it is distracting, um, for me, uh, when I'm reading the agenda because I'm, I'm multitasking, I'm, I'm reading, but I also have to listen to what you all are, are saying. And, uh, so it is distracting when, um, people behind me are talking because I can't hear them. And, um, so we just, you know, either we're going to have to ask those people to move to another place or they, they're just going to have to leave.
They're going to have to, they're going to have to leave.
So how do you, how do you, how are we going to address what we're trying to address and get it in writing is, is where I'm at. Uh, we all know what we need to address, how we're going to address it.
He's just got to come up with a, some draft language and we'll work through it. We're fine.
Okay.
Let's get back to what the clerk just stated. You know, how, how, how should we address that?
I think you've addressed it fine.
But should I just give them two or three warnings or?
I think one warning is sufficient because you've already stated it in, um, your statement of rules.
Yeah, unless it is so egregious that it warrants an immediate remand. And we've been there before with open verbal statements or accusations to the council, whether they've been blatant attacks on individuals, we've been there.
It's not, she's talking about, it's the noise.
She's talking about the background. People talking in the audience when they've been, when they've been asked and asked and asked not to talk.
So one warning, what they do to the discretion to the, to the president?
As you've laid out, the rules, if you have to warn once, then third strike, you're out.
Well, and that also pertains to sidebar conversations on, on, in the stairwells, you know, that we can overhear. I've had to take the administration to task before when I was president because they were chatting with each other about something and, you know, when we could, so, so it applies to everybody, you know.
No, me and Joel were bad about it.
And, and we do the same thing. We will chat with each other and so we're all going to have to do a better job.
But yeah, but. But I need to be able to talk to Joel.
Yeah, it, it's a difference is trying to handle business up there. The person, the clerk, she got to record everything and listen to, you know, Brussels people, so, yeah, that's the big, that's the big difference.
All right.
You okay?
So where are we?
I'm good.
No, where are we?
He's going to come up with some draft.
What are the action items, what are the action items of what amendment?
Um, submit in writing.
All right.
It's already on, that's already on.
That's the law.
That's already.
With clerk's discretion.
Well.
A little bit tighter than that.
Limited exceptions.
Right.
Something addressing accommodations for people who have issues with, with the writing process.
Right, that's one.
Uh, we're making the form writable online.
I almost got some.
That, that includes emails that are not on the form, that's acceptable.
Yes.
Yeah.
As long as it, the box is checked.
Right. And as, as clarification, does the council want to change the current statute also to say to improve the city government?
I would say city business.
We had it, we changed it. We had it, city business, at one time we changed it.
Changed the government?
Yeah. Oh, I don't, I think because it was too, it may have been too vague.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had, um, one thing, I had a couple, um, emails that I received about, um, section two sixty-two, um, number four, A four. And it's basically about, um, some constituents had concerns about, um, giving their address at the podium. Of course, they said they get that, they give their address, they don't mind giving it on, on the sheet to make sure verifying that they are a citizen, but given at the podium just because of, you know, people looking up their information because they're making a statement.
So the, um, um, I, because they've had people that have been threatened, um, because the, the address was on, um, they're, they're giving their address verbally.
Yeah.
And, um, um, I, I do, I have concern with that also if, if they've signed up for a non-agenda item and they've given their address to me, I can acknowledge that, you know, I have their address. And then everyone does not put, they don't put their address when they sign up for agenda items. Yeah.
Yeah, some people even use addresses for houses that are empty and do it consistently.
So maybe we can check and you can make sure that they are a citizen of the city of Mobile and if they're not, maybe you can ask them, are you a citizen of the city of Mobile? You don't have to give your specific address, but, but if you've checked them out, then we don't have to and, and they wouldn't have to.
Yeah, for a public hearing, that's, yeah.
We don't have a way to validate in a non-agenda item if they're sending information in, you can validate that before they speak.
Prime example why is because the cannabis issue, the speakers, eighty percent of them are from Mobile County or the city of Mobile.
So it would be more for a non-agenda item. Could we create some type of language for that, Mike?
I've asked, I've, regarding, regarding citizenship in the city of Mobile?
Yeah, but.
If somebody's speaking about an item like William mentioned, we can always ask, do you live in the city of Mobile or you hear from another city, another state? I mean, you can always ask that question, that's a legitimate thing.
I mean, the truth of honesty, anybody can give you an address, I mean, a fake address, so.
There might be issues as well with, people could legitimately have reasons even on non-agenda items that they might want to speak to the council because they have business or connections to the city. And I'm, I'd have to do some research, but it may not be proper to bar people entirely just based on their residence.
No, I don't think, I don't think we're talking about barring.
Okay. Just want to know, just want to know information.
Are they, are they a citizen or not?
Is, are they trying to impact business in the city of Mobile? If they're not in the city and what they're saying is not have any impact on the city of Mobile, then I don't think they should get an audience with the city council.
We used to have the council member who would ask, do you live in the city of Mobile? And they said, no, I live in Daphne. He was kind of.
Yeah. Trying to say that. No, a prime example, Ricardo Woods, what happens when he comes to the podium to talk to you? Were you going to ask if you live in the city?
Um, so it, we're, okay, so if, if we have, if given the oppo, I mean, if we have to mail the form, if they're amenable to us mailing the form to them because they're asking to address the council several weeks out, then we also mail a copy of the rules with that form.
Or some form of letter.
Okay.
With instructions or just some general.
Okay.
Accommodate, some reasonable accommodation.
But that's written into his, into his change.
But the understanding of, all as written and make a reasonable accommodation, clerk can make a reasonable accommodation with the law as written.
When you're not ready to check yourself.
I think it's not actually half of the reasonable accommodation. And I'm saying the law, our, our rules, in my opinion, it seems are sufficient to make that reasonable accommodation.
Quote, my opinion.
Well, that's what I'm here getting. Where we are now is Michael's going to come up with the draft and we can all.
I was going to say, come up with, you know, we should kick this one down the road long ways. And the result is is that people can keep calling Sam hello, just because they don't know what the message is.
Wrong. I was just saying.
Oh.
Are y'all going to take public comment?
Yeah, that's ironic. Okay. Thank you for your time. Yeah. Good evening. Good afternoon. Good morning. 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 Good afternoon. Good morning.